All right, this is Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. We are here for eighteen dash zero zero nine one R, Baltimore Police Department City Council Monthly Oversight Hearings. We have a, BPD?
Colonel's here.
Colonel's here, all right. I'm Councilman Eric Costello, Eleventh District, Chair of the Committee, joined by my left by Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett, Seventh District, to his left, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, Fifth District, to his left, Councilman Brandon Scott, Second District, all members of the committee. BPD, we have a forty-plus-page briefing here, which you sent to us before the hearing. We're also joined by Karen Stokes from the Mayor's Office, Karan Banks from Mayor Catherine Pugh's office, Marguerite Curran staffed to the committee. Whoever's going to be presenting on behalf of BPD?
Sir, I believe he's still out in the hallway. I bet it's Deputy Commissioner Bonaparte. I'll speak up and say, let me go out and get him, sir.
I'm eyeing him, I see him. No problem, no problem Deputy Commissioner. We want to, we want to keep the briefing short, five minutes. I know it's forty pages, but we want to, you could just hit highlights for us and then I think we're ready to get into questions, if that's all right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, may I ask, we, in response to some of the questions that you had from the last meeting, we, we are, I'm sorry, we have those, if you would like to hear them, we have done those, there was several questions and follow-ups that you wanted us to get back to you with?
Yeah, so why don't, why don't you give us a quick five-minute overview and then let's get right into those, we can get into those questions first.
Okay, yes, sir. So, let's, yes, sir. So, the overview, and again, I'm, what, the way that I'm going to do is I'm actually going to defer over to those individuals who are responsible for certain aspects of this presentation.
Perfect.
So, this way, and I'd ask for Director Williams to come up and speak on behalf of our reporting.
Good evening, City Council. So, our overview and our projection, we state, we are stating that as of September end, we had two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five members in the police agency itself. With the separations for the month, there were twelve new hires and civilians, there were sixteen, I believe there were fifteen that went into the police officer trainee program at the academy, and that there was one civilian. Overall, the net change for the year is a negative twenty-five. Our suspensions, we have seventy-two members that are on suspensions, and you will see that you do have to break out. Twelve are pending trial board, twenty, again, they are trial board and possibly some other issues, they haven't quite decided where they're going to go yet. We have thirty-seven open cases, and there are three waiting discipline or other reasons. For vacancies, we have three hundred and twenty-two. Again, as I stated last, last meeting, sometimes HR orders, there is a lack of timing, so we have three twenty-two on our internal reports. In four oh eight, in the line of duty, there were eighty-five for the month of September, non-line of duty is twenty-two, medical, twenty-nine, non-line of duty for medical is sixteen, light duty, line of duty is eighty-three, light duty, non-line of duty is fifty-eight, for a total of two hundred and ninety-three, and we can speak on that later on. There were no updates to the maternal or the paternal leave, and military is still seven for the month of September. Okay, for our...
Ms. Williams, we're going to jump over to Chief Odell real quick, so he can give us a very brief update on civilianization, and then we'll, and then we'll get back to you. Chief Odell?
All right, so, in speaking to what Bob was talking about, we submitted a proposal that included a eighty sworn, it ended up in around forty-five going back to the street with the remaining, fulfilling the units they were going into. We've had in-person discussions, we've had phone discussions, and we've had bathroom discussions, most recently about this particular project. We're on the same page in terms of fifty-six positions going forward. The other remaining of them, I'm coming back with him, with some additional investigative and patrol positions to civilianize, so we've made some progress and we're actually very close to getting a package together that will actually be submitted, that will have support from finance and the police department. And we've also, of course, met internally.
What's our timeframe for having that package completed?
I think we're probably closing in on thirty days now or less, and I think that's because we've got the first fifty-six, which is a good chunk of what we were going to do, so now I'm going to re-present another forty-ish, or thirty-five, forty-ish.
So, the end goals in the neighborhood of ninety, plus or minus?
That, that's what I'm going for, is ninety, which will put about seventy in patrol itself, or back into, you know, operational positions.
And how soon after that plan is produced and street-ready, will those officers be back in patrol, plus or minus?
Six months.
Six months from?
From the approval.
Thirty days out.
Yeah.
Plus or minus, okay. Colleagues, Councilman Scott?
Yeah, Chief, in reference to this, initially, didn't we, I thought the number for positions was a little higher than ninety, or is this just the first phase?
Oh, it's just the first phase.
Okay.
This is the, so, fruit-on-a-tree approach, this is the lo-hane fruit.
Yeah, just snatch it. Do you, could you tell us what you think the total number is in a department that we could move to?
In terms of civilianizing?
Yes.
Two hundred, the, the number that came out a year and a half ago, when they did an initial survey, was two ninety-one.
Okay.
So, I'm guessing it's going to be between two and three hundred.
Thank you. Do I answer my other questions now, or?
Does anyone have anything else for Chief Odell?
I do, but not in relation to civilianization.
Well, you go. Yep.
Chief, I want to talk about, like, the take-home cars for a second. This has been a hot-button item for the council for some time. It was our understanding that the department was, was told that they needed to reduce their take-home cars by sixty a few months ago, that the sixty cars that were, rental cars that were, not, take-home, I'm sorry, rental cars that were out there were supposed to be reduced, has that happened yet? And can you say what the reason for you guys being told, why you had to reduce it? Was it simply a financial thing? What's the policy behind who has a rental, who has a take-home? Are these, since I came here in two thousand and seven, that was, it was only that take-home cars were only for people who had to respond back to the, to incidents, emergency incidents, not for people who didn't have to do that. So, someone who's the director of a admin bureau that wouldn't be responding home, responding to emergencies, wouldn't get a take-home car. What's the policy today? And have we been able to deal with those sixty vehicles that you guys were supposed to cut out of the rental fleet?
So, the couple, I guess, among that, there's a few different questions. The first one was the, the reduction, the fleet reduction, didn't have anything to do with take-home cars, I mean, that was part of it, but it was total. So, that had to do with, in order to put forward a package that we had had from the previous police commissioners, reorganization of the department, we needed to come up with a set of savings. One piece of that savings had to do with reduction in the vehicle fleet, in particular rentals. And going through it, we ended up with around, I think we ended, we were just over sixty in the end, and we, and we've maintained that. I think one of the key parts of that answer is that, there's been many times, as Bob would tell you, that, you know, the department has attempted to do this and either failed at it or was successful and then returned to it. We, at this very moment, are still more than fifty down from when we did that nine months ago, and it might even, or, it wasn't nine at this point, maybe seven months ago, we remain there. So, we did that as part of a, a way to, to be able to put the money into the organizational changes that needed to be, create a budget-neutral move. That was one piece of it. So, that, that was successful and it moved forward, and it still maintains to this day that reduction. In terms of take-home cars, that has all...
Can I stop, stop you for one second? Could you guys send to the committee, as soon as humanly possible, a actually detailed report about that? And Mr. Senna May, if you could, if you could help with that?
Yeah, we've had to do that a few times.
If you could help with that, that would be helpful for us, to see where we are and where they are as of this date, as far as rentals. Sorry, sorry about that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, we get the, you just want, in terms of detail, you just, do you want numbers or, or?
Yeah, numbers as in how many cars we had, rental cars we had, let's just say, last year, and going throughout the months to see where, how you guys have reduced it to the number that you were supposed to reduce it in, but also where those cars were assigned in, in the agency as well.
Yeah, okay.
And then, of course, the fiscal numbers for how much it costs.
Yeah. Yeah, that was all done in a, at the time, I can, I should still have the original memo we submitted as part of, and he had, and Bob has it as well.
I'm pretty sure Mr. Senna May still has it.
So, that worked out. In terms of the take-home vehicles, that, as I understand it, has been the practice here as well, that, that if you were operational, you got to, you got a take-home car. In police departments across the nation, so it's not just true here, rank is often accompanied by a take-home vehicle, so the policy isn't, I wouldn't say clear on, like, who can't have one. It tells you who should, but, you know, when you start talking about, you know, do all majors have take-homes, or do you have, do all captains have them, that's not, that's not as defined as it could be, I suppose, but it's, what I see here is not unusual. It's when you end up with people with take-home cars you didn't know had them, and you don't know why they have them, and they continue to take them, that's typically a problem.
Well, that, I guess that's my, my follow-up question, is that do we have anyone that has one or has had one recently that should not have had one?
Yeah, I think, and that, and that would be probably in the eye of the beholder, I'm sure, if we asked a deputy, there'd be somebody on a list that'd be like, why do they have one? If you asked me, I might have something different. We, we try to audit this at least quarterly, at a minimum, and oftentimes, and most recently, we've been having to do it more often because we've been planning for the next vehicle a lot, man, and trying to reduce vehicles. In order to do that, we had to, we had to dig into who has what, where, both for take-home and more, so for, like, units that have them, do they need them, and are all their people taking them home or not, and do they need to do that?
Well, that's, I mean, that still doesn't answer my question, like, have we found someone that has?
Oh, we did. Yeah, oh, absolutely. We took care of it.
So, if you guys could tell, if you guys could give us a report on that, who had take-home cars that weren't supposed to have them, and what actions you guys did to correct that, and how you're going to prevent that from happening in the future, I think that will be beneficial, beneficial to us. And then also, I guess the same thing goes for, like, patrol vehicles, right? So, I know in the past, there've been some instances where members of, for example, actually, before you got here, Crime Lab had actual marked patrol cars, not the Crime Lab vehicles. Are we, do we still have that practice happen? Do we have any, any people that are in sworn patrol vehicles that should not have them, that are not actual sworn police officers driving them around the city of Baltimore?
So, to...
And I don't mean like the Crime Lab vehicles, I mean the striped.
I know exactly what you mean. The, so, for ever, pretty much, the Crime Lab has, as a point, Crime Scene has had marked vehicles.
Right, yeah.
So, and when I say marked, I actually do mean lights and sirens. They don't deploy them because they're not sworn, but they've had them. Our last allotment of cars like that was in two thousand and thirteen. We were allotted eight, eight Ford Escapes in two thousand and thirteen. I've been able to cut that down to two remaining. So, right now, to answer your question, I have two marked vehicles with lights and sirens in order to make up that fleet. In order to get rid of those two, I have to be able to get two, and that's a matter of why it's been so slow. It literally's taken me five years to get rid of six vehicles, but it's happening.
So, two questions. One, for you, Mr. Senna May, if we know that's the case, and I think that it shows, again, within the department, competing interests when every district commander is constantly clamoring that they need new cars, but we also have to have cars for the Crime Lab, how can we, we, it shouldn't take that long to, to deal with. How many vehicles total, Chief?
Eleven.
Eleven vehicles, right? It shouldn't take that many years in order for us to get eleven vehicles, so that Crime Lab has their own Crime Lab vehicles, Patrol has their own Patrol vehicles, and they're not consistently having to use, use each other's vehicles. Can, how, can we get that problem addressed as soon as possible? Because also, and I guess Deputy, you would be the best person to answer this question, before you're actually able to drive a patrol vehicle, you're supposed to go through EVOC training, am I correct? So, we're in violation of rules? Did the Crime Lab people go through EVOC training?
Many did. It depends on when we were talking, E and T discontinued their driving school or driving training three years ago, I believe. So, it depends which Crime Lab person it would be, and departmental person, because there's a number of departmental hires, and it's true across the city.
Yeah.
City has a program, we were able to utilize our own because we had our own. What the city didn't know was about three years ago, E and T discontinued that program, so anybody hired new did not go through the departmental training. Now, just as an aside, relative to the Crime Lab, we had, we implemented a driving class just because people were backing into things. Nothing serious, but it was annoying, to say the least. So, we went through a defensive class, but it wasn't like the, the EVOC that you're talking about that used to exist.
So, Deputy...
Except the academy, I mean, the people going through the academy, of course, have driving training.
Yeah, so that's my question. So, my question is, are we in violation of some, some rule right now? So, if they, if they didn't go through EVOC training and they're driving a patrol vehicle, are we in violation of a rule?
The city, so the city won't issue a gas card number unless you've been through their driving training? They gave us the exception to come through our own. That's, that would be the violation in terms of driving. Deputy?
So, if I'm, if I'm understanding your question correctly, the Crime Lab unit, as the chief has stated, has two marked vehicles with lights and sirens. Technically, to operate those vehicles, you should have the EVOC training to have that, okay? In terms of, now, what the chief is saying is that the vehicles apparently are being operated, but they're not utilizing the lights and sirens. But I get it, I understand what you're saying, so we have to look at that.
Yeah, Mr. Senna May, see, these are the kind of things that we can avoid if we're properly working together to get these issues handled. So, this is the kind of stuff that ultimately, let's just say, someone in Crime Lab is out, they don't have their lights and sirens on, they run into somebody, right? Now, we're, we're at fault in multiple ways because we knowingly are breaking a rule because we are so inefficient that we can't get patrol cars for Crime Lab and Crime, and cars for Patrol. So, these are the kind of things, so, like, Deputy, this, we can't have those people in those cars anymore. We have to figure out something, even if we have to put them in one of the unmarked rentals or something, we can't have them driving patrol cars if we know they didn't go through the training to drive the patrol cars. Not to mention that we know the patrol districts are actually asking for patrol cars.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And last question for you, for you, Chief, the, the, men and women that work in the districts, that's like the admin folks who are not, they're not sworn, the civilians, for example, I know the young lady's been at Northeast for quite, quite some time, they haven't seen a raise in quite some time. But I see, when we're looking at the numbers here, we see a lot of folks coming into the admin bureau who are doing similar jobs, who are, are making a lot more than them. Can you explain to us how that's happening and, and how, to be quite honest, we can, can do something about those, those men and women who have been here for a long time, who are quite deserving of a raise, who worked here when, you know, we didn't, basically, they were doing this stuff by hand, they had computers that weren't worth anything, their internet was so very slow, and now they feel like they're being passed over for no fault of their own, simply that, that no one seems to value them. Because I think that, listen, for us, we all on the council do the same work, and we're paid the same thing, with the exception of the council president and the vice president. If these folks are doing similar admin work, the folks in the districts are doing the same kind of admin work, then they all should be paid the same way.
Right, so the, the employees you're, you're speaking of are, are known as Cub employees, City Union of Baltimore employees. They run on a, a very strict and, and scheduled raise format, so they get, you know, every eighteen months, they have steps, you know, they got, they got entry, they got full performance, they've got expert or, or experience, I should say, not expert, then they got longevity. Once they've moved along their series, they're done, unfortunately, and the city, while at least us, we have no, no way to make any changes to that, unless they get a promotion.
So, I guess my follow-up question, and I don't know if you know this about me, but, and once upon a time, I used to work in the mayor's office, so I know that when I, for example, reached a certain, certain point, and they couldn't pay me more in that position, you know what happened? They reclassified me to a different kind of position. And we see that happen all the time at the Board of Estimates for, for other positions, and we've seen that happen at the Board of Estimates for other admin positions in the police department, some of which are doing the same exact work that these people are doing. So, if we're seeing that for people at headquarters, why aren't we seeing that for the people out at the district? Why aren't these people that have been here for so long being valued? So, we know that there are ways to, to do that thing. We have to treat everyone who's doing the same work equally. We know that you guys will unfortunately not be, don't have to adhere to our equity bill that will be in effect next year, but these are the very things that we're talking about. Because the majority of these people are women, the majority of these people are women of color, and they should be paid the same way as everyone else was doing the same job that they're doing.
Absolutely. So, the, you will, you will find that if you decide to have DHR representative come in, that I am a thorn in their side, as I am to many people, unfortunately, I think, but specifically to them. In that respect, the, the way that they have, in order to be reclass, they're going to have to meet a threshold of upperforming duties outside of their current classification. So, it can't just be that I've topped out, it can't just be I got more work to do. Having more work to do doesn't get you reclassed, you have to be doing duties that are outside of your classification. That's for a reclass to occur. I've met with many of the, mostly women, no men, so I will just say women, that, that are in these situations, I've met with them personally, we've talked about some strategies, what I've proposed, because I think individually reclassifying them is long and likely going to be unsuccessful, at least with what I've seen with our attempts with the Department of Human Resources now, in terms of that. Not that they're not, not partners, it's just that they look at it very, very mathematically and very, very, like, class, very science-wise, like, you're not doing duties in this class or we're not changing it. So, what I propose for them is with this civilianization, and, and this is, this is part of the two-part fix to civilianization, and one part I'm actually pretty excited about, all the jobs that are going to go in the districts, as well as other parts of the department, are going to be higher classified jobs, because what the department's been relying on, and probably, and really the city as a whole, for many, many years, are antiquated job classifications in pay grades that are, that are in that level, so typists, clerks, office support specialists, when we really need operations assistants. We need people who can write analytical reports, that can utilize Excel, that can write databases and, not code per se, but Excel and access databases. So, the jobs we're putting out there are going to be operations assistants, operations officers, those are higher-level jobs, higher pay. So, what we're going to do, and what I've started doing, is working with the employees as to when those jobs are going to come out as a result of civilianization, get them on a list, interview our internal people first for those, get the people qualified, work with and coach and mentor those employees, which I have a couple coming up to meet with me on Friday about how can they best prepare for this process. And that's what it turns out to be, it's just, it's a little bit of personal touch to ready them, and then understanding what the next class is, what's going to be expected of you, and that's what we're going to deploy in the field, and that's what Bob and I were just talking about, actually, is about the, the level that we need now, isn't what we needed ten years ago, and certainly not what we needed twenty and thirty, which is what a lot of these employees have been here for. So, we're going to make that fix, and it's going to be, it's exciting. I don't know if you can tell by the way I start talking about it, I like this, and this is, this is going to be a good, a good day when that happens.
Thank you, and thank you so much. I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer?
Hey, can I just ask a couple of questions on this? I'm on a, I'm on, I don't know, a page, there's no page numbers, but basically about the total medical leave, the amount of people that are out. And so, I noticed that the numbers climbed month over month pretty significantly, but we're now at ten percent of all officers being out on medical. So, I guess my, a couple of questions are, not to group it all together in the same, but when officers are on leave, who's, who's on top of, who's on top of keeping track of if they're coming back on time, once they've healed, what, you know, what the next steps are?
All right, so the, I'm going to have the major answer to that, he's, he's my major over medical, but the short ver, the short part of the first answer to that is, all those people aren't actually out on medical, and the reason, they, some of them are working, so it just, as a point of clarification, many of them actually are working, they're just not full-duty police officers and performing full-duty sworn jobs. The second part of that is that the number changed, as Jim's, the major's going to describe, because of an audit he just recently conducted in the reconciliation with Patrol on their light-duty status, which added, I think, forty-two, if I remember correctly. So, major.
Good morning, or good afternoon, sir, good evening. So, the medical, medical leave, we are bound by the contract with the FOP, so when people do go out on medical leave, we have rules that we need to follow contractually. So, when they come back from medical leave, when it's non-line of duty, they have to go to Mercy, they're evaluated by Mercy, and they're either determined to be able to return to full duty, or they cannot return at all, meaning they remain on medical leave, or they return to limited duty. If it's a line-of-duty injury and it's not serious, they have to be seen at Mercy the next day. So, Mercy is our vendor, they decide people's medical status.
So, the number four oh eight line of duty, four eight non-line of duty, are those officers ones that are working, like, like the chief had mentioned?
So, there's really two types of li, of light duty. When we look at locator four oh eight, per the contract with the FOP and the city, on day one, when you're seen at Mercy, that starts the clock ticking, you have three hundred and sixty-five days to come back from medical or light duty to full duty.
And are they being, on non-line-of-duty cases, are they being paid for that three hundred and sixty-five days?
So, if they have medical leave, yes. If they're working in a light-duty capacity, yes. So, in that three hundred and sixty-fifth day, when it's determined that they will never, ever be able to perform the full-duty functions of a police officer, they are put into something called locator four oh eight. They're given a ninety-day letter, saying you have ninety days to file for a line-of-duty or non-line-of-duty pension benefit from the F and P pension system. So, that's what locator four oh eight is. Now, last, at the last budget hearing, there was a huge discrepancy with the number of people in four oh eight. We've done an audit, we know that now it is definitely a hundred and seven people, all of them have been transferred to locator four oh eight, so that's an actual number. When you look at the light-duty number, those are people who haven't met that three hundred and sixty-five day threshold yet, sir.
So, so you're saying that, just for a point of clarity, because it's the first I'm hearing, that if I was a police officer and I went out and I was playing ball, basketball, and I broke my ankle and I'm out, I get paid for a full year, and my position's held for me, obviously, that I get, but I'm still paid even though I can't do that work, or if I'm limited and I can't do another job or any job in the department, you still get a year salary for that?
So, it depends, sir. So, if you were hired, I believe it was in nineteen ninety-eight, prior to, I don't know the exact date in nineteen ninety-eight, the city had an agreement with the FOP that there was unlimited medical leave. So, for somebody who was hired before that date in nineteen ninety-eight, yes, they would be paid for the entire time that they were out, if they were on medical leave for that entire year. Now, if you're hired after that date in nineteen ninety-eight, you get one vaca, or one sick day, you earn one sick day per month you work. When you exhaust all of your sick leave, your accrued sick leave, and all of your vacation and other leave, you go into a non-pay status.
So, that policy was changed because it was, it wasn't working, or?
Sir, I couldn't answer because I wasn't here prior to nineteen ninety-eight, but I'm sure it was done for fiscal reasons.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, and my colleague was just talking about, you know, equal, equal pay and, and for equal work and, and personnel things, I can tell you, our staff and people in this building and other city agencies, they're certainly, they don't certainly have those kind of, you know, perks or benefits. And one, and the reason I'm asking specifically about this is because the number seems really high, and I looked at just our neighboring jurisdiction of Baltimore County, and they have a, a nice amount of officers as well, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but the amount of officers that they have on light duty or in any of these classifications is a fraction of what we have. And so, I'm just curious as to what's got us to this point, I understand the pre-ninety-eight stuff now, but, you know, how we're at this point where we are now, where ten percent of our force is fitting into this category, and, and if there's actual oversight as to who's doing, you know, who's, who's on top of it? I know in the county, when you have an officer in your precinct and, and they're out on light duty or, or whatever it is, there, the captain's checking in with them, saying, when are you coming back, what's going on? And just curious if that's happening in the city.
Yes, sir. So, let me, let me start by saying, prior to nineteen ninety-eight, the, I would say that the agency was different. And what I mean by that is, and many of us here can, can attest to this, is that it, it was really... it, it was really frowned upon to take medical and more importantly, to abuse medical. And it wasn't just the agency itself that would check you, um, if you were abusing medical. But more importantly, it was your side partner or those people who you worked with every day that made you come to work because they didn't want to, um, they wanted you to do your fair share. It was just a different mentality we're seeing or believing with people today. But I think one of the things that compounds our medical problem, and we've talked about this at several hearings, is the current staffing. I mean, the reality is, is that the, the current, um, work schedule is problematic for the agency as a whole. And one of the, um, things that, that it is absolutely starting with us is this medical abuse problem. In other words, if officers are being drafted every day to fill patrol cars, and even though our drafting numbers have decreased, but if that's happening every day and it's happening primarily to younger officers, just because of the way it is contractually set, those officers are going to get tired. And then what happens is they say, I don't feel like coming to work. I'm calling medical. So we have, obviously, we have issues like that. Um, we are, as everyone is aware, we're working hopefully to improve, working in, in, in cooperation with the FOP. And hopefully we can get a better work schedule for the officers. We, we understand what those challenges are and we're also understanding how it's impacting officers. And more importantly, how it's impacting younger officers, officers who we are hiring, um, but we're also losing too. So we, we are, when we go back to your question about are we listening, we're listening to that. We actually have, uh, analysis that we're working with, with the mayor's office that is actually, as well as Amy has taken this on herself, um, to look at why people are leaving. Because we understand that that's a problem. So we have to fix that. Uh, so I guess to answer your question, uh, it, it's, it's certainly, we believe, driving our medical numbers significantly.
Right. And so is that, are some of those policies also, um, the issues that, uh, that we're having um, on the district, you know, on the district levels, um, as it pertains to officers who, you know, look, back in the day, things obviously were very different. And, um, one of the things that you mentioned couldn't be more spot on, that people did, you know, look, they made sure that their partners were there because nobody wanted to leave their, their partner hanging.
It would call you.
And it's sad that today that is not the same sentiment because uh, you don't see that anywhere now. People are just, it's, it's all about themselves.
It's like it's okay to do.
I think a huge part of that, well, actually I know a huge part of that is, um, is dealing with the officers that work really hard day in and day out are quite frustrated with the officers that don't. And every district, I'm sure, has some that are, go above and beyond and some that just, you know, throw their hands up. And, and frankly, I think some of that has to do with, uh, I hear a lot of, that a lot of it has to do with, uh, you know, some of the pension battles and stuff, which I think is, is extremely wrong to change things on people. And if you, if you kill morale, what, you're not going to get a good work product. And so hopefully that stuff gets resolved soon because when people come in and work for the city, they're entitled to get what they were promised when they came in. But at the same time, what the city should be entitled to is that when you do have officers that are problematic and what we see with a lot of the officers that have been giving the department a bad name and a bad rap, it's not their first time. It's not like, you know, people aren't surprised when certain things happen. And so what are some of the protocols that are causing the department to keep these officers that are not putting out a good product and who are also, you know, having incidents, but we have no choice but to keep them on?
So when you say incidents, are you speaking of internal affair incidents?
Well, whether it be internal affairs or even, I'll, let me give a, let me give an example, uh, one that I witnessed firsthand in the Northwest a while back. Um, there was an officer that basically tried to frame, uh, a situation. Some of you guys are aware of it because we have meetings about it. Um, and lied to his superiors, lied to his sergeant, then lied to his captain and then lied to his major about an incident. And fortunately, um, we have body cameras today, which, uh, the leadership was able to review and, and to their credit, they did and saw that this officer, um, lied to all of them and was actually doing something that potentially would really harm the department. And it was my understanding that, that officer was no longer in the department until, um, I noticed that he was still there, uh, two weeks ago. And I inquired, I said, why is this guy still here? Oh, we can't fire people. We got no choice. Go ahead.
That, that's not true. We, we, we certainly, um, you know, it has to meet a certain criteria. Um, I, I, I'm unfamiliar with the case that you're speaking of, but I do know that we have obviously a disciplinary matrix. And in that matrix, there's certain, um, criterias or certain benchmarks that need to be met in order for it to get to a, what's called a term, I believe, a category F, uh, something where the individual can be fired for their actions. But there's also, you have to go through, you know, the due process. It has to go through that administrative hearing. Um, evidence has to be, um, brought before the, the committee that actually oversees that and hears the disciplinary actions. That's another situation that's actually being in our contract negotiations as well. Um, but the agency can terminate, uh, officers for a, a, a variety of things as long as it meets those criterias. Again, I'm not sure what the circumstances were. In other words, how that played out. Um, I'm unfamiliar with that particular case.
Well, in this circumstance, uh, the only punishment this officer had was he had to go from sector three to sector one. Um, but besides that, uh, is there documentation that we can get that would show what those protocols and procedures are? So that we say, okay, if this meets this threshold, that is something that, I mean, there's obviously things that are, that are pretty obvious. But, you know, the other stuff that's in the gray, gray area, I mean, if you were running, again, if you were running a company and, uh, your employee lied to you, you'd probably fire them. If it was something that could potentially, you know, harm your, your company. And so I don't know why that's any different in the department. So is there documented public stuff that we're able to look at?
Sure, there is. And we can get that to you, make that available to you, sir. Yes. And I believe that's, um, if I'm not, if someone has, I'm pretty sure it's in our transparency.
It's in our trans, I believe it's in our transparency.
Correct. So it's actually online.
What's it in?
The transparency, um, I don't know what that thing is called.
It's on our webpage, sir. And if you look at the webpage, um, under the transparency tab, what you'll see is, I, I believe it's called the disciplinary matrix. And if you look at the disciplinary matrix, that will tell you. And it's progressive discipline. So if it's multiple validations of one category, then it raises it to another category.
Or some cate, some infractions that are just so severe that it would warrant termination or some sort of, uh, you know, the more stringent discipline.
Right. And that, those are obviously, I mean, I've read the, the code, the city code as it pertains to the police department and multiple other agencies also. So those are clear, but, um, I'll certainly review this as well. And so who, um, who in the department, uh, is in charge of overseeing? Is that internal affairs that would see that somebody's escalated and it's been a pattern of behavior?
So OPR does the initial investigation and they determine the findings. And then from that process, it goes over to, uh, the charging committee who looks at it and reviews to see whether or not, uh, the, the, what the sufficiency was so they can apply the appropriate charges. And then it, that begins the entire process as it goes through. Obviously the member has to get an attorney in many instances, particularly when it's something severe. Um, they have rights protected under LEOBR that we obviously must adhere to. And then it, it, it goes from there up to the level of the trial board and then a determination is made, you know, a finding is made, uh, based on what the panel hears.
Right. Cause, uh, certainly, and I'll close with this, that we would save ourselves a lot of headache and aggravation and morale issues if we were to be able to nip these situations in the bud when people are starting to have a pattern of, of these, of this behavior to just get rid of them.
Sure. And I think that, um, and I'm sure Chief Calley can maybe speak on this, but, uh, we, you know, we, one of the lessons learned in, in the GTTF was the, um, you know, there were several of those individuals that went through repeatedly through the, through the internal affairs process. So like, what are those benchmarks now? What are those thresholds? And, you know, those type of, um, um, like triggers in, in a sense frequently that's occurring. And obviously we need to improve on that. That's one of the things that we are being mandated to do with the consent decree as well. So those, some of those things have to be systems built out, but, uh, those are things that we're obviously monitoring as well.
Deputy Commissioner, the Director Williams, which, did you finish your portion of the?
I, I don't.
Okay.
Was there some other comment?
No, I mean, I, I did have a couple of questions, um, related to, um, let me see. The, the first was related to the academy.
So Lieutenant Colonel Barrellero, who I think I've, did I fail to mention you this morning?
No, you said her name.
She, she's able to speak on this.
Okay. I was trying to look back over some of the, the old numbers and I just want to be clear, you know, um, when, um, you know, what happens after the academy and how an officer would be, um, you know, become, I guess, a part of the ranks of patrol. So it, it looks like, um, for class 2017 dash 04, um, that there were 42?
I have 18 stats. I don't have, um, 17s, but I can, I can get them for you. I can review them for you. I can try.
So even though I guess they, they aren't set to graduate until October 26? Is that, am I looking at that right?
November 2nd is when they'll actually graduate.
So that would be 1801. It's going, going to graduate on November 2nd.
So for example, when it says class 2017 dash 04, I guess, uh, December the 4th, 2017 through October 26, 2018, what does that mean?
So that's the class that went out early to field training to the districts where they're going to stay. We changed it up a little bit so that they went out before the graduation date so that they got to go out.
So, um, they, they're already in the ranks now? So you said?
They're still in field training. I, I believe they're still assigned to field training.
So they're actually assigned to education and training and they're in the patrol division doing their field training?
Gotcha.
They have one week left of field training.
And, and so just, I just want to be clear. So once they complete their field training, what, what, what's the next step in the process?
They're, they're assigned to the patrol division.
Okay.
Though they, so what Commissioner Tuggle, uh, had instituted, which I think is a very good idea, is instead of going field training and then putting you in some other district, wherever they field train is where they'll be assigned to. Now, we can actually make shifts in that if one district is seeing more of a deficit than another, like to medicals, like duties and so on and so forth. But where they're assigned to right now, theoretically, they're detailed to the patrol division and they're assigned to education and training. Once they complete, and once they complete their field training, they'll actually be assigned to that district and be in the patrol division.
And, and so once they complete their training, then they become sworn officers or? And, and so the, the numbers for the field sworn officers would reflect those? I, I had 42. I don't know if that number is correct.
So you're right. So the number for, um, the colonels patrol units would increase by 42.
Okay.
That's what should, that's what should happen.
Correct.
Right.
And so for, next time we come together, I should, we should see a bump in the sworn officers by 42?
Well, it, unless, unless we promote. And then if we promote, we promote an officer to a sergeant, sergeant to a lieutenant, um, then that number in patrol will be different from an officer to a sergeant, sergeant to lieutenant.
Okay.
That make sense?
No.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's.
Your number right now, your number right now, if you would put 42 people onto it, it's going to increase it. But if we do promotions in 10 days, we're going to take officers and make them a sergeant. So it might not equal what you think it's going to equal.
So the, so the number here where we, where it says field sworn officers, that doesn't reflect command staff? That's just, is that what you're saying? That's just?
No, I'm saying that if you take 10 officers from patrol and you make them sergeants, you're going to have 10 less. And if I give you 42, then you're really.
Right. I wasn't even talking about patrol.
That's what I thought you were talking about.
I was just talking about sworn, sworn officers. So like, for example, the actual for September is 2,299.
I'm not the person to answer that, sir.
I think I can help, sir. I think I can help with that. So when a, a police officer is hired as a trainee, there's not a separate job classification for police officer, trainee. So when you're looking at the 2,000, whatever number it is, they're included in that number when they're first hired. So upon being hired, that is going to go towards your sworn authorized strength number that I think you're referring to? And I hope I'm not confusing it even more.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at the spreadsheet we have and it has trainees broken out separately.
Yes, that's going to be something different. So when you look at your.
I'm sorry. Um, we have sworn officers to, what is it? To, 2,299?
Yes.
If you see the 178, that is the number that we have in positions that are, uh, being filled as police officer training. Again, I stated that sometimes the work order is in a position change. Then once they get into a sworn officer's position or classification, then we move them up to the sworn numbers. And we do this in the fiscal department so we can know, uh, our employee demographics.
So the 178 here, you said reflects.
Police officer.
Police officers that are in training. So that, does that mean some, at some point in the academy?
Yes.
So there are 178 officers in the academy.
On paper is 178. By the time next week, when the orders go through, that number will decrease. So currently, because there is a lag in paperwork, basically. Whatever we have in-house and whatever, um, Colonel, um, has in ENT, those numbers don't actually change automatically. They may be still in field training. Some are, yes, still in class. I think that actually we have, what is this? 90? And plus 35.
No, I did that.
So it's 30, 28 and 35, 93 that are actually still in training. And because the work order or the position flow has not, you know, moved as efficiently when we did this reporting, there was still 178 that was reported on paper. So actuality and actual, there are 93 that are still in training.
Physically at the academy.
At the academy.
And the.
And then we move them up to the sworn. So.
And so the 85 have, they're still trainees, but they've been moved to field training?
That's a separate 32.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm try, I'm trying to understand the.
So. How's in the academy? I don't have the numbers, but I just wanted you to think about it in three different areas.
Okay.
You have, um, cadets or trainees that are actually in the academy doing the hours that they are needed in order for them to become police officers. At some point, a portion of those will go out to field training in the district. Okay. So you have like, there's a, there's a district kind of number, even though they're really attached to education and training. And then also you have some that are just hired, hired, that they're putting under the trainee classification, but they're not actually physically into the academy.
Okay.
That make sense?
It, it, it does. It makes it at least a little bit clearer. So, so with that, when I look at the number of field sworn for, um, actual August, um, 2018, it says 2,191. But when I look at the actual for September, 2018, it says the field sworn is 2,299. So it looks like a 108 increase in the, the number of sworn.
That was due to the transfer.
And, but, but when I get down to the net change in total sworn, it shows a minus 22. Is, is that right? Am I, am I, am I reading this right?
I can briefly explain the dramatic increase. Um, so classes 1701, 1702 and 1703, um, the paperwork was never processed to change their classification from a police officer, trainee to a police officer. So over, in that change in that period of time, we processed all of that paperwork and reclassified all those people. So the officers who were in those three classes, just in the past month, had their classifications changed to the correct classification to police officers. And that's that 108 people jump that you're seeing there.
It just makes it difficult to really, I guess, gauge where we are and how, you know, where we are with recruitment, retention, you know, when, when the numbers, when I, you know, actually last month, I thought I was looking at an actual number, but now this month, I But now, this month, I find out that that number really wasn't reflective of the actual ranks. I mean, am I correct? And so, I mean, it's almost like, why are we doing this?
It is a little bit confusing, but when you...
No, it's a lot of bit.
When you look at August, if you look at August, you'll see trainees graduated, a hundred and twenty-five. And so, I put those numbers there because, again, they still had the trainee job classification, even though they had finished their training, but their orders had not gone through to be moved up to a full-fledged sworn police officer. So that's that.
So, so with that being said, so I see, and so I guess maybe I can understand this better now. But the, once again, the actual for sworn officers was two thousand one hundred and ninety-one for August. Then, the actual was two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine for September. But it looks like the net change in total sworn, if I'm reading it right, says minus twenty-two. So did we, did we lose officers or did we gain officers?
No, because you just have to look at it separately. And again, that first portion, we're just dealing with the actual employee demographics.
But am I reading this right? Is that net change supposed to reflect a minus two, I mean, minus twenty?
For the whole fiscal year?
For the whole fiscal year. But what's the, what's the, so twenty-two reflects...
The sworn, yeah.
That we've lost twenty-two sworn officers over the fiscal year?
Yes.
But the, the total, the sworn officers looks like it was an increase of a...
Right.
Hundred and seventy-one.
Yes, and it's due primarily due to the trainees that graduated. In August, there was a hundred and twenty-five police officer trainees that graduated. And the reason why we did this, and it's because members were asking for reports. And in those reports, you are able to sort by position number. And so, in these reports, you see positions that say police officer training. So we wanted to break it out true to the reports. Because, again, in communication, we lose things. So if you see the actual reports and someone's sorting and you say, oh, they have police officer trainees. Well, no, I broke it out and said, okay, of these police officer trainees that you can sort from this report in August, there are actually twenty-five that the orders have not flowed through the process, that are actually sworn officers. So again, we wanted to stay true to the report for easy view. Yes, we can compile, but again, if somebody gets a report, then they'll want to say that the numbers, they don't correlate. So that's the only reason why, from a fiscal standpoint, I broke it out to be true to those reports that were being requested. So going forward, we can consolidate the numbers. But again, if a report is requested and you do your sort, you'll see those positions that are classified as police officer trainees.
Okay.
We're rectifying the administrative paperwork process to make this much quicker. So we don't see this huge jump.
Got you.
From one month to the next. So we won't.
But it's still, it's still never going to be exact because we still have to wait for DHR to make the...
Okay. So I have one more question before Councilman Slifer's question. So, and once again, I'm just trying to, just trying to be clear. When we look at the projections for vacancy and overtime, and I was trying to look back over previous reports. When, as we move from month to month, do we go back historically and change the projection?
No, we should not be going back and changing the projection. I think that I saw a formula error, and so I made the correction as far as the projected salary changing. You will see, on a month-to-month basis, the column that has salary savings or benefits amount at twenty-five thousand, that number will change. Because as we change in vacancy numbers, I'm trying to map it out throughout the whole year. So, yes, you will see that number change on a month-to-month basis, but it should not happen prior to September. But that number will change. So if you look at July and August numbers, July and August from this day forward, they should not change historically. But at that point where you see twenty-five million, where you see, it's actually going to be the salary savings and that's going to be based upon the number that we are reporting as for the vacancies. So...
So you're saying it shouldn't, I shouldn't see it change from this point forward, but it did, but it did change prior to this meeting?
For July and August, it changed because...
Because when I was reading it and looking back at others, I was just like, this, the numbers...
Just for July and August, just those columns, July and August. There was a little formula error.
Okay. But we're straight now.
Right, we're straight now. But the number, the column, which would be column B, where you see twenty-five million, seven hundred, or is that nine hundred? Nine hundred and seventy-four thousand or so, that number will change from month to month because we're doing a projection out and it's always going to be based on the number of vacancies. But historical, the columns for July, August, and going forward, September, those months will not change.
And you may have explained this before at a previous hearing, but what's the reason for the big jump in the projections for November?
The three periods, three pay periods. Three pay periods?
But do we, do we see that same kind of jump everywhere else? Okay. Councilman Slifer, oh.
It's just the way the calendar works. There's generally two pay periods per month, but there's, I think, two months where there happens to be three that fall all within the same month. There's twenty-six total for the year.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Slifer.
Yeah, so, and this is to feed off, a little bit off of what Councilman Scott was saying before he left. So how does this financially play in with the different reclassifications as well as the different levels people are at? So I guess it works both ways at the top and the bottom. So starting at the bottom, officers who are going through training, who are in the academy, right? I assume they're being paid a different level than once they are field training officers, right? So like, when you're in the academy, you're getting paid X. When you get to field training where you're actually in a patrol car with a supervisor?
Same. It's the same.
Okay, so that level's the same. So then, once you graduate, then you're immediately bumped up to the next?
It will, it will not change after a year.
So when we see some of these numbers here that my colleagues were questioning about how it shifts around, is that, is there any financial impact to us? Or is it just how you guys are running the classifications on where people are?
Let me answer this. So generally, you know, within the department, you think about it, it's kind of like an escalator, right? Somebody's brought in at this lower level, but somebody at the top is dropping out and the whole, the whole thing shifts up. So what we, what we try to do, what I've tried to guide the police department on in these projections, it's too much to try to figure out which particular person happened to be leaving what salary, but what we look at is like an average salary. And the average, you know, average years of service, the last time we looked at, probably somewhere in the eight to ten year range, if you looked at the whole department, you have some people that are twenty-five years plus. You have some people that have only been there for a year.
So are you, are you saying that that's based on, you're using those numbers only for projections, not actual pay scales?
Right, for projection purposes.
So the day somebody graduates, HR, even though they do have a lag time, they make up the payment that's due to those people based on the day they get promoted or the day they move to a different classification?
So, you know, when somebody gets promoted, they, or they reach a different step, they move up on the scale. But when we're trying to project, what's the, what's the savings from having a certain number of positions vacant? We don't go to the individual level and say, there's three people at year four, there's seven people at year... You know, we basically say an average salary for the whole.
So I get that as far as the projections are concerned, but the actual physical payout, if somebody is a sergeant today, they get promoted to lieutenant, so it's halfway through the pay period. Is that prorated, even if HR does not change the classifications the day they get promoted?
That I'm not sure. I don't know, I don't know how quickly it, when it goes into effect.
I think you use, we retro pay? So you're saying, yeah, so you're saying if a person was promoted and the HR order did not go through, will we go back and give them retro pay? Yes, we would. Have we taken all of those details into account when we have projected this out? No, we have not, because, again, we don't know who's going to be promoted. So, again, this is just a tool in which we're trying to use and to be transparent on where we are as far as our vacancies, as far as our projected overtime spending. We did incorporate those trainees in which we believe that we will get each, each time a class starts. So we did incorporate those persons into our calculations.
So then what do you do with, like, Councilman Scott was mentioning, how people get reclassified based on their roles changing or them doing work outside the scope of what their job is? How is that pay determined? And within the police department, you're saying, yeah, they're moving up the escalator. Is it only the levels that we're seeing here? Or are there like in-between levels based on somebody doing work outside the scope of what?
So generally, you know, the budget, again, accounts for, we look at an average salary. So, you know, unless the workforce becomes significantly older or younger, so to speak, you know, the budget for salaries stays roughly the same every year with, in addition to a call or whatever we project. In terms of your question on how do you, how do you do reclasses? What we ask the department to do is we ask them to make those budget neutral. So let's say they came to us and they said, well, we have six people in an, you know, office assistant role that's very low-paid and we would like to have somebody at a higher class. We would ask them to make that budget neutral. So there might be a situation where they have six people at a lower-paid level doing some kind of work. And if you, if you map it out, it could be budget neutral if you paid only five, a higher salary.
So if I understand correctly, so I'm looking at the lieutenant colonel level. So are you saying that, it says there's five current lieutenant colonels. So it's possible that all five of them are being paid different amount. Let's just say they all came on at the same time, have same level of years on, but one's a lieutenant colonel for, you know, a division that is extremely time-consuming, has a huge workload, and one's a lieutenant colonel for a department that doesn't have much of a workload comparable. Are they both being paid the same because they're in the same position?
Yes, yes.
So basically, to Councilman Scott's point, you have discrepancies then across the board. So you have, you're fitting everybody into these different levels, even though that clearly is not, is not the appropriate way people should be paying. I mean, there's people in this room here who work significantly more than people who are at the same level, the same position, but have greater responsibility.
I think it kind of goes back to something that was said, and I maybe can use it as a comparative. Some divisions may have more people. But at the same time, another division that doesn't have as many people has, maybe have a different type of intricacy at work, but still the same. Comparatively, like, the council, each one of you have a different size in your councilmatic districts. So your volume of work could be different from one district to another, yet you're all paid the same.
You got that right.
Correct? So that's kind of the comparative that you can use. So you can't really, sometimes you look at it in terms of that, but also, what is the intricacy of work that this other unit or section or division may be doing? That could be detailed or, you have to look at it kind of that way as well.
Well, if it works exactly like the council and it sounds like it does, then, then you're under, you're showing us a problem that we have in our own backyard that we know about already, which is that we do have the same budgets across the board, but also the same issue that we have, at least I know I have, I can't speak on behalf of my colleague over here, but we also have to fit people into the specific classification. So in council, it's tech, it's a council assistant. So if you're somebody, like, some of our colleagues have, you know, ten people working in their office that are each getting paid a couple, a few grand apiece. But at the end of the day, people have to fit into a same classification. So you could have two people that are in the same classification. One of them is running, you know, one person's office and the other one in that same classification is, you know, just picking up the phone, handling, scheduling. So, I mean, that, that seems to be a financial issue that really needs to be dealt with. I mean, you know, I don't know each individual person's workload, but, you know, I would assume the job of chief of patrol is, what level are you at? What's your, your colonel? I assume being a colonel and a chief of patrol is a lot more time-consuming and has a lot more load than a colonel that may have a different division that, you know, doesn't fluctuate as, as much. And so, I mean, I'm looking over here at major, I guess that's where you have the most people in that category. So like, the person who was here before, was he, is he an Odell? Is he a major? Is he, what level is he?
He's a chief, a civilian chief.
He's a civilian colonel. Okay, so he's on the bottom here. So he's one, he's one of four. So like, a guy like him, is he still in the crime lab?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, I mean, I vaguely remember that, you know, the past handful of months, all of a sudden, he's now been before us outlining stuff that have nothing to do with the crime lab. So obviously, he's doing a lot more than just the original crime lab stuff. Now, now he's dealing with staffing stuff. So does he then, in order to compensate somebody for taking on extra roles, extra responsibilities, is the only way to properly compensate people, like what Councilman Scott was saying, is to go to the board of estimates? Or you guys don't even have that ability to go to the board of estimates and change a position to do that?
I suspect that if that was the case, that that would be the proper way to do it.
So you guys could go to the board of estimates and...
Again, I would suspect that. I'm not exactly a hundred percent sure, Bob. I don't know if you want to weigh in on that.
Yeah, so, so, yes, but remember, it has to be, the way we look at it is budget neutral. So if somebody go, you know, let's say you have a position that's at a certain classification, somebody says, I just want to give that person a raise permanently, well, that's an increase in cost. So the way we guide agencies is that if they have, you know, positions that they think are being under, you know, underpaid for the type of work they're doing, they can propose to upgrade it, but they have to make a budget neutral. So there's a lot of cases where we'll allow an agency to get eight new positions, but offset it with ten that go away and those, and those equal out and balance out. And those are the types of things that go to the board. But in the police department, the classifications are very limited. So there's not as much, there's not quite as much room to do that. I mean, if you're a police officer, you're a police officer. Do they do different work across the agency? Of course, there's little differences, but to try to figure out each one individually, what work they do would be impossible. So they stick with those very broad classifications. There's a little bit more flexibility in the civilian, in the civilian ranks to do that.
All right, so is that, is that the reason why? I mean, the most glaring thing that I'm looking at on the page with outlining how many people are or how many budgeted positions are on each level, when you come to the captain level, there's like a major drop-off. Why, you know, why is that so? Why is there sixteen cap, sixteen people at the captain level? Whereas, right before the lieutenant, there's ninety-eight. And then, when you get to major, there's twenty-six. Shouldn't, isn't there like a captain per, per each major?
There isn't. So, and I will tell you that the, the thinking was, at one period of time, is that just that the nine districts would have captains. And the reason being is because of the amount of hours that a patrol major would need, that they would need help in, to being able to cover the vast majority of the days. For example, a workday for a major could start at the VRI meeting at eight AM and then you could have a community meeting, such as we had a few weeks ago, that started at seven PM and then, you know, run until nine PM. So the thinking was that you would put a deputy commander in there so they could share the workload because of the demands of the patrol districts, because of, you know, just the job requirements. Where we are in terms of sixteen right now, you know, I know that the agency now, the commissioner, actually spoke about it again this morning, I mean, this afternoon, in terms of reorganization. I know that's something that has been in the works for some period of time, with the org chart and things of that nature. So I think that you're going to see possibly some changes in those numbers there. But just to keep in mind, the captain positions, at least the philosophy was at one point, was that those ranks would just be considered for the districts. Now, some of those ranks have filtered out into other sections or divisions because of the need to do that, because we needed a commander to fill those positions, not necessarily promote them or demote them, because that probably wasn't warranted.
All right, so basically, since you guys don't have the flexibility that Bob's referring to on being able to pay according to the workload, then basically, from my, my perspective, being a captain is probably one of the worst positions you could... is probably one of the worst positions you could, you could have based on workload versus compensation.
I, I.
I mean, because I'm, I'm looking at it like this. I mean, part of the issue that you hear all the time is certain people feel like they're overworking and compensating people who are underworking in different positions. And so that's, again, a morale issue. And so when you have people who are at a lieutenant level, are they, lieutenant level is qualified for overtime?
Correct.
Right. Is a captain able to get overtime?
They are not.
And so what's the, what's the pay scale difference?
At one time, they were, but that was reclassified again some, some years ago. It was timed, it was a civil service position. No, it no longer is now.
So what's like the pay scale difference between a captain and a lieutenant?
I, I don't know what that is.
It's roughly six percent over a twenty-five-year lieutenant. So wherever a twenty-five-year lieutenant is making, plus that by six percent, and that's what a captain is making.
And so would you say like the workload is my last question, I promise. Hours late, but the workload, what, what percentage of workload additional would you say that a captain has over what a lieutenant has?
It would depend on where. It would depend on where the captain is assigned. Patrol commanders, as in a major, they actually get paid more than a regular major in the agency, they get a stipend, which is, it's not a lot, but it's, it's more than what an actual major, like to say, works inside or works in another division. Like under Colonel Conaway's shot, a major in homicide doesn't make the same amount as a major in a district, but the major in homicide is working a lot. You know, it's, but it is factoring in.
More getting paid separate. So you could be a major at a completely different level based on, okay, so that's what I've been, I was asking along.
District commander, yeah, that's correct, and that's a good point the colonel brought up. District commanders get stipends.
Gotcha.
So let me, let me ask a quick question related to applicants. So the data that, that we've received showed that, over the past three months, there've been more applicants than I think we've had in the entire year previously. So what, what happened? Why, why are we, why are we getting so many applicants? I mean, it's a good thing, but, but is it something we're doing?
Because it went online, it went on NeoGov, so you can fill out an application from anywhere through the city. So you can be at your house and fill out an application. You don't have to bring in the packet.
And, and so what do we anticipate, what, what percentage do we anticipate of those applicants actually getting into the academy?
So, exciting, we have fifty-two people ready to start the academy in November, which is a huge class.
And, but, so, I mean, and that's great news, that fifty-two. What, but of a, of a typical, I guess, application pool, what, what usually are our percentages?
I think we get five out of a, I think, is it five? Five out of a hundred, what is it?
So sir, typically, out of every hundred applicants, you get five to seven. So five to seven percent. But that's the applicant who actually comes in and follows through with the civil service testing or the National Testing Network when they go to that. So historically, with the BPD, it's five to seven percent. And nationwide, that's very consistent.
And do we ever find when maybe someone applied for, say, the fire department, and, and maybe they, you know, they were on a waiting list there that they would, I guess, co-apply for the police department? Or do we ever, do we ever look at the fire departments?
Try to steal their applicants, is what you're asking me?
I was trying to say it nicely.
So, you know, I don't know that we actively recruit like that. I, I don't know that. I can ask, I can ask the major. Maybe Major Hanley could speak to that, he used to be there.
And I'm not saying, I mean, I'm not saying that somebody who applies for the fire department automatically would say, well, if I don't get the fire department, I'll try the police. But, I mean, you know, that's, that's definitely somebody who's interested in.
In public service.
Public service. So it might be, you know, shocked, you never know, you might get some.
Yes, sir, there, there wasn't a whole lot of crossover. People who want to be firefighters generally don't want to be police officers, but that is a great suggestion to, you know, if somebody's not being hired for the fire department, we're not going to know why. I'm not familiar with the state standards or the city standards for hiring a firefighter, but I'm, would imagine that the police officer standards are probably a little bit more stringent.
Yeah, I mean, you might be right. I mean, I, I know, I think I talked to one of the fire chiefs, and, you know, they just expressed to me the number, I mean, they, they get a tremendous number of applicants. You know, makes your numbers look pitiful. What I'm, what I'm trying to say is that, that within that, you know, they, they have limited spaces, so they're, they're saying no to a lot of good applicants. We can assume that.
I'll, I'll look at it, sir. I'll take a look at it and see if there's a way we can reach out to them.
It's just odd that you bring that up. We literally have, there's a chaplain who applied for the fire department, and because of the backlog, he just recently applied for BPD. So exactly what you're talking about. So, and whoever snatches him first is going to get him.
There you go. Confirmation. Well, being that there are no further questions, I, I think that, I didn't bring my, my pajamas, so I didn't plan on spending the night. So this hearing is in recess until next month. Thank you all.